Regular session of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas will now come to where the time is 6:00 PM on October 16th, 2015.
Fifteenth.
You know what, I signed something wrong earlier. I signed it the 16th. Alright, it is the 15th all day. The invocation will be by Reverend Junior Jones, followed by the pledge. Reverend Jones, if you'll come to the mic.
Father in heaven, we thank thee for the beauty of another day. We thank thee for a day that we have never seen before. As we come tonight to discuss the business of our city and our county and surrounding counties, we pray that you will give us knowledge, wisdom, and a better understanding. Bless our mayor and his cabinet, and we pray that you will give him leadership and give us followership. We thank thee for our law enforcement, keep them safe, and our judges and all masters who make up our county. Bless us now, we ask in the precious name of Jesus, pray for the sick and the certain everywhere. There are some battling with different diseases and different ailments. We pray that you would give them a positive outlook on life, that you would give them what it takes to continue in your faith. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Face the flag, hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, of the highest court, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Item number three is a roll call. Ms. Precipice.
Here.
Mr. Sines.
Here.
Mr. Best.
Present.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
We have a quorum. Item number four, citizens' comments. If you are a citizen of or a taxpayer to the city, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Know the council and staff may not come in. Being known, we'll move on to departmental reports.
Mayor, the departmental reports are as submitted. Mr. Weezer, I'll give the Public Works Director's report this evening. It'll be followed by the year-ending and quarter-ending fiscal report from Mrs. Bandy.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Evening.
Evening.
The utility department worked on the hydrostatic testing and bio-testing to the new water main on Yosemite, Yellowstone, and a portion of Benzville. All the testing has passed so far. And the water plant production for the month of September was at 68,624,000 gallons, and all water wells are at 100%. Our water main project, construction crews not working on the Havre River Road near the lane. They have placed approximately 4,400 feet of pipe. Upon delivery of the fittings for the Crestline Waterwell, we will pause the construction so that the crew can tie in the new water line into the distribution system, so that we can fill when it's ready. Landmark has had no activity at the water tank project, the street CIP projects, the contractor is finishing up the Kert work on Cynthia Drive, and as of last week, they have started construction on High Mill. The street department crews have completed several street repairs from past water leaks around the city. They have been working on the Continental Drive repair, repairing the road failure at the drainage using flowable film. And then other crews have begun the tree trimming along bus routes throughout the city. They are also prepping equipment and requesting material pricing for street repairs to Yellowstone and Yosemite. The Parks Department, Parks Superintendent, has also been working with his crews on fine-tuning our turf management program. With his knowledge of the specified chemicals used in the field, he has been able to plan out a more concentrated and effective chemical program that will promote healthier turf growth and the better weed control. The Parks Department worked diligently in preparation and setup for the national night out and the boots, birds, and birdies, which were held at the River Park Pavilion. That completes my report.
I have a question for you. When is that tank going to be done and filled?
Well, they were projected to have it ready to fill by November, the end of November, December. So, we've still just got to tie it in.
Just a question. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I have updated our quarterly financial report for the month ending September 30th, which is the end of our fiscal year for y'all to review. And there's attachments for y'all to follow along. And the great news that I have to report is looking on page five, you will see that we have collected $11,623,151 in revenues for our general fund. This is a surplus of over 30%, what we had originally budgeted. On page six, you will see that we spent $8,539,918 in our general fund, and we projected to spend $8,876,698. This is a savings of $336,780, which is 3.79% under expenses. And this does not include the purchases that we were able to absorb that was not budgeted, and it was approved by you, Council, for us to purchase the six brand-new Tahos, the Cardinal badge system, and the firearms for the police department that totaled $294,000, and the three new trucks, the skid steer, the hydraulic lift, and the John Deere tractor for Public Works totaling over $173,000. Looking at page seven, we collected $5,40,452 in revenues for the utility fund. We are 10.08% under what we projected, but we did anticipate this with all the wet weather we had endured this year. However, on page eight, for the utility expenses, the department heads did an excellent job with staying 23% below budget and only spent $3,858,164. This is $1,152,692 under our projected expenses in our annual budget. Of course, this is a one-time exception. The department heads really cut back due to the rain to make sure we stayed under our expenses to make up for the revenue. They depleted their inventory and kept everything up and running by using parts from other areas. What a great way to end the year, and a special thanks to our Public Works Director Johnny Weezer, our Police Chief Ronald Sanchez, and all of our department heads for their exceptional managing of their budgets. And a special praise to our City Manager, Mr. Peterson, for his superb leadership, his strong guidance, and his perseverance on uniting each and every one of us. And also, a warm and heartfelt thank you goes to you, Mayor, and Council, for all of your support.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Bandy?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I just want to say you guys rock.
Good report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I should say as submitted.
As submitted, okay.
I appreciate that, Mr. Best. We have great people in this city, and none of this would be possible without the employees in this city. Where the utility fund is concerned, when we were looking over a million-dollar shortage in June, to come in at a half a million dollars a head two months later is definitely, definitely indicative of the management and the fiscal responsibility that Mr. Weezer and the department had. And I might add that the other big part of this budget is the police department, and I can tell you emphatically, the Chief Sanchez was doing everything he could to hold the line, even in lieu of the $294,000 that you all gave us the leeway to spend because you saw it was the right thing to do to arm our police department with the tools they needed, and we thank you all for that. Moving on to the message, our council appreciation picnic is scheduled for tomorrow. We're asking all the council to be there by 11:00, if you can. The meal will start probably about 30, 40 minutes after that. We have some awards and some recognitions, and then there are some special recognitions the committee came up with this year that we think will be entertaining. Our Parks Master Plan and the contract amendments, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Peterson, and I finished reviewing the initial draft of the Parks Master Plan. We had about an hour and a half phone conference with Burnett Land Place Consultants last week. We'll have an onsite visit with them this next week. We told them the things that we wanted changed in that Parks Master Plan. There wasn't a whole lot of major things, but there were some things we wanted changed that would make it a little more easy read for the council. And we'll move forward from that. We'll be sitting down next week to discuss the feasibility study on the Arena Complex, the multi-event center complex that was commissioned by the council under a contract amendment. We hope to have something finalized and in the council's hands in November. I don't want to hedge a guess and say it will be ready November 5th, but we hope by the end of November we'll have this thing ready for review. I might add that that is going to take at least an hour workshop, if not an hour and a half. This thing is an all-consuming document, and, you know, we're speaking about the future of Pleasanton and quality of life issues. And, you know, what did the citizens... Did we capture what the citizens' input was, the stakeholders' input, the school district's input, students' input? And I think we have. It is an all-consuming document, and I think the council will be pleased. Fire station update. Chief Garrison and I check our mail every day to see text out of aviation, and FAA has given us the release of the property to build a fire station. We continue to stand at the ready, waiting for that response. The annexation updating calendar, nothing is changed as we move forward. At the next meeting, we will obviously begin to speak with you all about that schedule and that calendar as we move forward towards consideration for annexation as directed by council dating back to April. Just to review, you all passed the resolution to declare the intent to annex. All the letters have been sent to the property owners as of about a week and a half ago. No one in the proposed annexation area had an ag or timberland exemption, so we were not able to offer any of the folks a non-annexation agreement that we were able to offer in the previous annexation. And a non-annexation agreement clearly states that we would not annex these folks as long as they didn't change the gender of their property, start subdividing it, or start building on it. And we did have, I think, four properties we offered, and they signed that. That's our message for this evening. I just want to end it by saying our last visit on open enrollment really was from our ICMA representative, Steve Lopez, over the last couple of weeks. As you all remember, this is a 457 plan approved by the council. It is a totally voluntary secondary retirement plan, if you will, that the employees had total choice to enroll in. We are the number-one representative group that he helps. We have over 55% of our employees enrolled in this and contributing towards the secondary retirement. To give you some numbers, in some of the larger areas, to include San Antonio, he has about a 20% participation. Our employees saw the value of it. Our fund as a total grew 8% over the last year and a half since the program started. Our employees have invested about $204,000 in it, and the fund is setting at about $259,000 right now. Now, everybody has their individual accounts. That's a total sum. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor. I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Questions for Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
Once we get the approvals that you're seeking for the fire station, approximately how long, ballpark figure, do you think it'll be before it gets up and ready to go?
I think we're looking at about two years, because then we'll begin the process. We already have the direction from council on the procurement method. We have the direction from council to move forward. So, we'll have to do an RFQ for a construction manager at risk. That's going to take about six to eight weeks to get those RFQs in for a committee to interview those possible firms that would build it, and then it's going to probably take another six months to finish the design. Right now, as you know, we just have a floor plan and rendering, and the construction manager will begin working with RVK at that point to move towards design documents, which are usually 30, 50, 70, and 100%, and then construction documents, which is what we actually build it by. But I would say that it's going to take six months or so, if not eight months, to get the design done and to get a guaranteed maximum price, and it will be at that point, we would come back to the council again with, here it is, this is what was approved, this is the guaranteed maximum price, we need the direction to move forward. I would think that about a year to build it, is what I would think.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Mayor, as far as... At what point are we going to talk about equipping that fire station, and what is it going to take?
We have the existing equipment now to go in that fire station. There will be equipment transferred from some other fire stations out there.
Going to make do with what we've got now?
Yes, sir. Now, there will be some things we'll have to purchase as far as kitchen equipment, bunks, some desks, and things like that. We might look at producing a new compressed air machine, if it has some redundancy there. But we do have the equipment we need now to put out there.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Item number seven is mayor's message and announcements. My only announcement is I won't be able to make it to the picnic tomorrow. I have a job that won't get back till 6:30 or 7:00 tomorrow night, so, I don't know. I've already caught a brief over that, so... And catching more from Mr. Flores, but still, the only announcement I have. Item number eight is discussion and action to appoint a council member to represent the citizens of District 6 as council member for District 6.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to appoint Travis Hall to represent the citizens of District 6 as council member District 6.
I second that.
We moved and seconded to appoint Travis Hall as council member to represent the citizens of District 6 as council member District 6. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, I guess we need to administer the oath of office to the newly-appointed council member for District 6. Judge, Mr. Hall, if you'd please come up and get sworn in and...
Aye.
Aye. Travis Hall.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
...of the Office of Councilmember District 6...
Of the Office of Councilmember District 6.
...of the City of Pleasanton...
Of the City of Pleasanton.
...and will do the best...
And will do the best...
...of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend...
Of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend...
...the Constitution and laws of the United States...
Constitution and laws of the United States.
...and of the State of Texas...
And of the State of Texas.
...and ordinances of the City of Pleasanton...
And ordinances of the City of Pleasanton.
I furthermore solemnly swear or affirm...
And I furthermore solemnly swear or affirm...
...that I have not directly nor indirectly...
That I have not directly nor indirectly...
...paid, offered, or promised to pay...
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
...contributed nor promised to contribute...
Contributed nor promised to contribute.
...any money or valuable thing...
Any money or valuable thing.
...or promised any public office...
Or promised any public office.
...of employment as reward...
Or employment as reward.
...to secure my appointment of the confirmation thereof.
To secure my appointment of the confirmation thereof.
(applause)
Mayor, can we get the picture?
Well, Mr. Hall, sign that council if you meet us up front. I believe we need to take a picture.
Okay.
Here. Signature. And we're good. Congratulations.
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 You got it.
(inaudible).
All right, everybody good? All right.
Thank you.
(applause)
I know you did.
I didn't know.
(inaudible).
You've been having to cut my own border.
Me too.
It's like I'm at home.
Just hay fever or what?
Just allergies.
I started...
I mean, just...
Just like them.
I started fishing and watering, and my nose began leaking farts, and then squirted.
Scratch your throat.
An agenda. Item number A is approval of the minutes of the regular session of October 1st, 2015. Item B is approval of the temporary street closure, Crestline Drive between Live Oak Drive and Crestline Drive at Deer Run on October 31st, 2015, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. In chief, you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to approve consent agenda items A and B. Second.
We moved and seconded to approve consent agenda items number A and B. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Motion carries. Item number 11 is discussion and action to direct city staff to bring a resolution for consideration and possible adoption, adjusting the business hours at City Hall. Mr. Peterson?
We visited with you all about this at the last meeting of the manager's message. The city staff has been examining what we can do to provide a better level of customer service at City Hall. City Hall has long suffered during lunch hours, especially in those times when we have some folks that are out on scheduled vacations and such, and then we have somebody calling in sick. The redundancy at City Hall during lunch hours is somewhat thin, to be quite honest with you, and I'll kind of coin the phrase, when the mayor asked me about a month ago why his wife had to sit in the drive-through window for 25 minutes, I said, this is what I've been visiting with you for about six months.
Again, she made me do that.
Yeah. She made you tell me, right?
Yes.
Well, that's what we're here for. Along those lines of providing us excellent customer service, in the last few years, we've increased our information technology capabilities, the going green initiative by the mayors, meeting the objectives for community development services as far as their regulatory requirements and providing excellent customer service, the most efficient way to allocate our existing human capital, and the training of additional personnel. Not to say what could happen in today's world with security measures when the staff is thin. So, what we're proposing tonight is to ask you all to let us bring a resolution for consideration and possible adoption, instead of having a thin staff over three lunch periods where we struggle from 11:00 to 2:00, especially between the 1st and the 10th and the 25th of the month, to allow for a unified closing of City Hall from 12:30 to 1:30 each day, for staff to take a unified lunch hour. What would this do? Well, this is a change. There's no doubt about it. The court has long closed for a lunch hour. People will get used to it, we hope. We would ask for a 30-day window to put the proper advertisement out. Hopefully, we could get help from the news media, whether it's our Facebook page and website. We would hand flowers out to those who visit City Hall. The 12:30 to 1:30 lunch hour, just to recap, would allow anybody who has 11 o'clock lunch hour to still conduct their business. It would allow anybody who has a 12 o'clock lunch hour to still come to City Hall and conduct their business, and it would allow anybody in the city who has a 1 o'clock hour lunch hour to still conduct their business. I think if for nothing else, and the mayor asked me, does the staff think this is the right thing to do? We absolutely think it's the right thing to do, but for nothing else, but in today's world where security is concerned, it's the right thing to do to provide the ultimate level of security for our staff. Now, we've taken security measures at City Hall here to be able to notify the police department if anything happens instantaneously. But as we've seen with recent tragedies, sometimes instantaneous still isn't enough, but if there's personnel on site to support, we can at least help to mitigate a situation. Our recommendation to the council this evening is to direct city staff to present a resolution to the city council for consideration and possible adoption to establish a universal City Hall lunch hour from 12:30 to 1:30 PM, with the hours of operation still to be 8:00 to 5:00 every day. And I'll stand for any questions or comments, Mayor.
Okay.
Would we want to add Monday through Friday at the end of that?
No, I think that's understood.
That'll be understood.
That's understood.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor? I move to direct city staff to present a resolution to the city council for consideration and possible adoption to establish a universal City Hall lunch hour of 12:30 PM to 1:30 PM, with the hours of operation to be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct city staff to present a resolution to the city council for consideration and possible adoption to establish a universal City Hall lunch hour from 12:30 PM to 1:30 PM, with the hours of operation be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Any discussion? Being known, we'll proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Item number 12 is ordinances and resolutions. Item number A is reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1156, amending the city's general utility and special fund budget and declaring emergency. Ordinance number 15-1156 is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, amending the 2014-2015 budget for the City of Pleasanton, repealing ordinances in conflict and declaring emergency.
Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to adopt ordinance number 15-1156, amending the city's general utility and special fund budget and declaring an emergency.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1156, amending the city's general fund and declaring an emergency. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Motion carries. Our ordinance is adopted. Item number B is reading and adoption of ordinance number 15-1157, amending the city's general fund and declaring an emergency. Have you found what page that's on here?
69.
Oh, I got it. 69. Ordinance number 15-1157 is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, amending the 2014-2015 budget for the City of Pleasanton, providing for the intra and inner fund, and declaring partner transfers, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to adopt ordinance number 15-1157, amending the city's general fund and declaring an emergency.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1157, amending the city's general fund and declaring an emergency. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number C is reading and adoption of resolution number 149-15, amending the business hours at City Hall. Resolution number 149-15 is a resolution of the city council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, setting hours of operation for Pleasanton City Hall.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to adopt resolution number 149-15, amending the business hours of City Hall.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 149-15, amending the business hours of City Hall. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign. Resolution is adopted. Item number 13 is discussion and action to accept lease agreement for 321 North Main Street Building. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor, as we mentioned to you all about a month ago, the Women's Club had approached us, and several members of the Women's Club are here this evening, that they were losing their lease on their thrift store over on Bryant Street. I believe the trails are in the market to try to maybe sell that property, if I'm not mistaken. They also asked that it be known that they've really outgrown space for quite a while now. They've needed a lot more space where they can attend to our community better. They ask if we had any plans to use the old library. In this past year's budget, there was a plan to move community development services there, but with the things that happened with oilfield prices and the barrel of oil and the uncertainty in the economy, we just didn't feel like it was the prudent thing to do. We started seeing some decline in permit activity and plats, and so, we just kind of held our cards, if you will, over this last year without moving. We couldn't, we just couldn't see using citizens' money to take on another utility bill just because we had talked about it a year ago when we didn't know prices were going to go downward like they did. We still feel confident that we can continue to operate. We've made some adjustments in community development services to better access our developers and development community to permits. Megan has moved back into the Community Development Services Department to process those permits. We're putting another door back there so there'll be quick access for the developers. But back to the Women's Club, they expressed an interest in wanting to rent the library, the old library. We told them that 500 would probably be the right price. The agreement in front of you all tonight is the same format agreement that we had with CASA. We followed that same format where the city would be responsible for major...
Everybody found what page that's on here? I got it. 69. Ordinance number 15-1157 is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, amending the 2014, 2015 budget for the City of Pleasanton, providing for the intra and inter fund and declaring partner transfer and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to adopt ordinance number 15-1157, amending the city's general fund and declaring an emergency.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 15-1157, amending the city's general fund and declaring an emergency. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number C is reading and adoption of resolution number 149-15, amending the business hours of City Hall. Resolution number 149-15 is a resolution of the city council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, setting hours of operation for the Pleasant City Hall.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to adopt resolution number 149-15, amending the business hours of City Hall.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 149-15, amending the business hours of City Hall. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Resolution is adopted. Item number 13 is discussion and action to accept a lease agreement for 321 North Main Street Building. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor, as we mentioned to you all about a month ago, the Women's Club had approached us, and several members of the Women's Club are here this evening, that they were losing their lease on their thrift store over on Bryant Street. I believe the Trails are in the market to try to maybe sell that property, if I'm not mistaken. They also asked that it be known that they've really outgrown space for quite a while now. They've needed a lot more space where they can attend to our community better. They asked if we had any plans to use the old library. In this past year's budget, there was a plan to move community development services there, but with the things that happened with oilfield prices and the barrel of oil and the uncertainty in the economy, we just didn't feel like it was the prudent thing to do. We started seeing some decline in permit activity and plats, and so we just kind of held our cards, if you will, over this last year without moving. We couldn't, we just couldn't see using citizens' money to take on another utility bill just because we had talked about it a year ago when we didn't know prices were going to go downward like they did. We still feel confident that we can continue to operate. We've made some adjustments in community development services to better access our developers and development community to permits. Megan has moved back into the Community Development Services Department to process those permits. We're putting another door back there so there'll be quick access for the developers. But back to the Women's Club, they expressed an interest in wanting to rent the library, the old library. We told them that 500 would probably be the right price. The agreement in front of you all tonight is the same format agreement that we had with CASA. We followed that same format where the city would be responsible for major repairs such as plumbing systems, HVAC, electrical. We'll obviously take care of the lawn and landscaping, if you will, like we do for CASA. The thing that I think is key here is that this club, these ladies, provide a much-needed service to our community. And I think that being in the old library, they're going to be much more centrally located and accessible for some members of our community who would normally have to walk to Bryant Street. The other thing that I think is key, and they proposed this, is they said that they would only want a 12-month lease at the time to give the city the leeway if we ever need that building to come back and use it. And I think that's quite admirable on their part to offer that. The recommendation from staff this evening is to enter into the agreement with the Women's Club to rent the facility beginning November of this year for a 12-month period at $500 a month, due on the 1st to the 5th of the month. We'll take care of the major repairs. They'll be responsible for utilities and garbage. And I think that we couldn't find a better service for our community to use that building for at this time.
Questions for Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
If it ever comes a point in time where the city does feel like they need the property back, do we have any concept of notice would be to them? How much time we would let them know?
Well, we would let them know as soon as we know, and I don't think that anybody wants to let them know in the last month of a lease, hey, we're going to take it away from you. I think that the proper planning procedures would have to be in place, and I think that, you know, the professionals that are in this city, starting with the council, would not want to give somebody a month's notice. I think we would do the right thing.
Well, and plus, we're going to be talking about it anyway. It's not going to be a surprise.
Yeah, but that's a good question.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Peterson? This is a standard contract.
Contract we used with CASA that was reviewed by our city attorney. Yes, sir.
Okay, so the late payment statement under number one is business as usual as far as a contract.
I would have to check with our city secretary to look at the other one, but I believe it is the 15%. Is that correct, Mr. Secretary? That's to encourage paying the bill on time.
Sure, for sure, but it is business as usual as far as a contract for any...
We feel like in lieu of what the rent is and the size of the facility, that's the right thing to do.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to accept a lease agreement for the 321 North Main Street Building.
Moved and seconded to accept a lease agreement for 321 North Main Street Building. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Motion carries. Item number 14 is discussion and action to grant a variance of Title 15, Land Usage Chapter 150, Building Code Section 150-04, ground signs and billboard regulations to waive the 15-foot setback for modification of the existing freestanding sign by adding a new four-foot by eight-foot electronic menu board sign at 605 Second Street, and you're recommending improving the variance? Yes, sir. Any discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to direct city staff to grant a variance to Title 15, Land Usage Chapter 150, Building Code Section 150.04, Ground Sign and Billboard Regulations to waive the 15-foot, 15-feet setback requirements from the modification to the existing freestanding sign by adding a new four-foot by eight-foot electronic menu board sign for 605 Second Street.
Second?
It's moved and seconded to grant a variance for Title 15, Land Usage Chapter 150, Building Code Section 150.04, Ground Signs and Billboard Regulations to waive the 15-foot setback for the modification of an existing freestanding sign by adding a new four-foot by eight-foot electronic menu board sign at 605 Second Street. I imagine there's any questions as specific as that's written that we're going to have any questions, but any questions? Proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rainey.
You're good, Mr. Rainey.
I like those cars.
The regular session of October 15th, 2015 is hereby recessed until executive session pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code Subchapter D, as it pertains to real property 551.072. Time is 6:35 p.m. Regular session of October 15th, 2015 is hereby reconvened. Item number 18, discussion and possible action to accept appraisal value of the alley in Block 1 of the Franklin Edition of the City of Pleasanton.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to accept the appraised values for the alley in Block 1 of the Franklin Edition to the City of Pleasanton.
Second?
It's been seconded to accept the appraised value for the alley in Block 1 of the Franklin Edition of the City of Pleasanton. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Motion carries. If there's no objection, I'm going to, well, no, hang on just a second. Hang on. 19. If there's no objection, I'm going to read 19. Discussion and possible action to direct city staff to bring an ordinance to abandon and vacate the alley of Block 1 of the Franklin Edition of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, directing the city manager to notify the Church of Christ Pleasanton for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the alley and request by Church of Christ Pleasanton for financial consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to direct city staff to bring an ordinance to abandon and vacate the alley in Block 1 of the Franklin Edition to the City of Pleasanton, Texas, directing the city manager to notify the Church of Christ Pleasanton for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the alley as requested by Church of Christ Pleasanton for financial consideration.
Second?
It's been seconded to direct city staff to bring an ordinance to abandon and vacate the alley of Block 1 of the Franklin Edition of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, directing the city manager to notify Church of Christ Pleasanton for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the alleyway as requested by Church of Christ Pleasanton for financial consideration. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. Motion carries. If there's no objection, I will dismiss it. Item number 20. No objection? We're moving on to item number 21, review of the bills.
No, sir.
None? Item number 22.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded, we adjourn. As a favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post same sign. My name is Jern. 6:43 p.m.